Okay. We will call this meeting in order to introduce some new employees that are going to speak for a few minutes.
Yes, I have four new employees at the Highway Department.
Wow.
And they'll come up and do a quick introduction.
All right.
Hi, I'm Zach Chris. I'm M two at the Highway Department and I came from Clearwater County Highway Department.
Welcome.
Glad to come on over here.
Good to see you back. The toughest thing you'll ever have to do.
Hi, I'm Chad Raisman, M two O'Brien shop, and I came to you guys from Waste Management. Thank you.
Welcome to Chad.
Hi, my name is Ryan Fielding. I'm the new engineering operations manager and I came over from Norman County. I was their assistant engineer and did solid waste there.
Awesome.
Nice to meet you.
I'm Lee Falk, M two at the Highway Department, came from Knife River Materials. I really have to say that I enjoy working with this crew.
Okay. Welcome. I hope you folks like it here and stay a long time. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
All right, identifying future work meeting topics. Are there any that? Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Chair, I did receive some correspondence from a constituent regarding the reimbursement to the county and governmental agencies that rescue idiots on the ice. And so I'd like for us to talk about that. I want to find out if we have any policies in place where we what policies we do have. And so I think that would be an item I'd like to talk about. Maybe Sheriff or maybe Chris can talk about it. I don't know, whatever.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
What?
I think we all got an email a few days or a week ago regarding the rural counties caucus group. They're lobbying entity down out of St. Paul and they their organization is made up of a bunch of rural counties across the state. And I was interested in their letter and I'm familiar with their government relations teams that, you know, very reputable folks. So I'd like to have us take a look at them and kind of add to our lobbying efforts. I can't remember the amount, but it was, it seemed nominal. Anyway, maybe we can talk about it at our next meeting.
Okay. Does it have?
Commissioner Gould, if you wouldn't mind sending me that correspondence. I don't know if I received that.
Okay, yes.
That will help me put the agenda memo together and.
I didn't see it. I didn't see it.
Okay. I knew all the, I thought all the commissioners were on there, so.
Not saying I wasn't.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Let's move on to the Veterans Home update.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hi Shane.
Shane Gusterson, County Veteran Service Officer, here to provide an update on the Veterans Home. Before I turn it over, Kevin, I'm just going to talk a little bit about what we've done in our office to support the Veterans Home and working with our community to go get the applications and things of that nature. And so primarily what we do is the veterans will come to our office and or their family members and we'll assist them with the admissions application. We'll help them build those applications and get the supporting documents, make sure everything is is the right document or send them out to get the documents they need. And then we can direct submit that for them. When we do that, it gives us an opportunity to identify veterans that have maybe need increases in disabilities that they're entitled to. Or identify veterans who have never used a VA or have access to VA medical or disability compensation. And we're able to work with them and try to get them into that that area. We also have supported the recruitment effort for the Minnesota Department or for the Veterans Home and pushed out a lot of the job notifications out to the community as well on the jobs that are available. As we've worked with Kevin and his team, we've helped identify certain things within the application process and we can support their team with the documents they need in order to make sure that a veteran's application community moves forward by providing those documents that they cannot basically they cannot reach those, we can provide them. So it continues to move the applications forward for those veterans. And with that, that's where we're at in the process. It's supported Kevin. I'm going to turn it over to Kevin. And Mary Helen Chadwick, the Public Affairs Volunteer Coordinator, you'll play one of your, and we'll look at some pictures and give you a quick update on that.
Thanks, Shane. And Kevin, that's a little trick. We're going to see how you bet.
Nobody told me there was going to be a test there. There we go. Good afternoon, everyone. Kevin Gishkamp, Minister of Veterans Home. So good to be in front of you again. I'll give you a bit of an update first and foremost. Mary Helen Chadwick, as we may know, is my new Public Affairs Volunteer Coordinator. She is now getting deeply involved, jumping in the deep end. I thought she was going to be doing some of these talks pretty soon. So we will tag him on a lot of things. Yeah, so I know Shane put these slides together and maybe we'll go through them quick and then I'll give you the updates as fresh as I can. So can I not control this? It'll shock you. All right, so construction progress, group staffing. So that shot is from our sign, not all the lights are on, they're supposed to be. But that is the sign rather subdued at sunrise last week when I came in. So kind of nice, kind of classy. Folks have said they drive right by it. And I said, that's not all bad. I don't think we want to have the Walmart sign, you know, all there. This is a, this is a home, right? So construction progress. So a couple of things to update you on. About two weeks ago, a certificate of occupancy was achieved by the general contractor, which meant I could take all my staff from the Westridge Commerce Center behind Home Depot and we could move into the building, which is wonderful. And now we are able to spread out and actually start using the building. Today, this morning, substantial completion was was achieved third time around. We finally got there. The architect was there, the general contractor, Minnesota Department of Admoni, Real Estate and Construction Services and Central Office, Minnesota Department of Veterans Affairs, along with my team. There are still items that need to be fixed and addressed in the home, but they're calling those punch list items and PRs that I've been assured will not affect our passing continued survey. Already passed fire marshal clearance, electrical engineer, building engineer. The Minnesota Department of Health is coming for a pre-licensure survey on January 2nd. So that's where we're all, we're all lining up and I'll talk about admissions here in a second. Recruitment and staffing. So when I interviewed for this position, many of you met Doug Hughes, former dedication commissioner Doug. And he asked me, what's going to be the toughest part of this job? And I said, well, this is a trick question or it's staffing. So he said, no, it's it's staffing. So not only is it a very difficult staffing environment for healthcare in particular, because a lot of a lot of healthcare workers either chose different occupations or retired if they could during the pandemic. And going to the work, going to work for the state is great. I like being a state employee, but getting there is a bit of a trek. Sometimes all the processes, the skill surveys, we aren't as real as maybe other employers around. So we're pushing up a hill there. Initially, we will, by federal regulation, only be able to admit twenty four residents to this home. You've probably heard that before in discussions. Then we have to run it for at least thirty days with those twenty to twenty four veterans. We will only be admitting veterans to start spouses will come later for the commissioner just veterans to start. We have to run it for thirty days and then the then the federal. I have already formally asked for that to happen early in mid-March. We have to pass that federal recognition survey, which is pass fail and very arduous. I've been told that we have to pass that before we can go beyond twenty four. Okay, the rate of current passage on the first time around for new veterans homes is about twenty percent. Brand new homes. Down in Arizona, guys, no doubt there, they opened their home, they pass on their fourth try. And the third time they're getting tagged on things. They didn't get tagged on those. So I just want to steal folks that because we have two hundred and seventy nine people on our waitlist right now, we will not be able to go past twenty four until we pass that better recognition survey. But we'll get there. Whether we get there the first time or the second time, we will get there. Yes, John.
So out of that list, how many do you know are actually qualified?
Okay, qualified is it might, I'm not exactly sure how to interpret that, but here's how I will break.
Well, like the activities of daily living that they have to go by or to be.
Okay, so so two hundred and seventy nine people have successfully applied for admission to the hall. All you have to do to apply for admission and get on the list, so to speak, is you have to be an honorably discharged veteran from any of the US Armed Services, served at least a hundred and eighty days of active service or have been wounded and discharged before then and be a Minnesota citizen. Or the at least age fifty five year old spouse of that honorably discharged veteran. That's it. You get on the list. Shane, you get on the list. Are you on board? I haven't seen your name. I shouldn't even tell people that.
It won't be fifty five.
No spouses have to be fifty five. Yep. Yeah, so any, any literally, there are assistant director of nursing Billy Benzo is a Marine and knows him well. He could be on the list right now, but he would be on what we call the inactive list. So here's how that two seventy nine breaks down. There are a hundred and sixty six people on our active list, the remainder are on the inactive list. Inactive is the placeholder people. Got my DD two fourteen, got my ducks in a row, all my benefits are laid out and working with with the area county veteran service officers and I'm just hanging out. When you get on the active list, that means when there's a bed available and my name rises to it, I believe I will qualify. So you move up to the top of that list, then you still have to have that doctor's order for twenty four seven nursing care. So I can tell you, we met at our admissions committee, we meet on a weekly, we are down into the forty to fifty fortieth to fiftieth people that applied to get to that twenty four. Because people are not ready and good for them, right? So, so that's why I always tell people, don't hesitate to apply because we will get through this. And once we pass that that federal recognition survey and we can get up to seventy two, then that list is going to start moving. Right? Resident admission application. So yeah, that's your summary there. Dedication ceremony, that's going to take place in the spring because the governor wants plenty of notice. I assume we're going to have dignitaries, including yourself, out there for that. Right now I'm being pretty there's a sign on our door that Mary Ellen put up. So she's wonderful at wording things to say what I want to say, but not say it the way I would say it. Because I want to put up a sign that says, stay out. Hers is much more professionally written. At this time, we are not open to the public because honestly, folks, people just walk in. During the construction progress, when the subcontractors were moving in and out, people literally just drove in, got up, walked in the building. You'd find them just wandering around because they just want to see you. It's dangerous, right? And it's, there's all kinds of risks involved. Plus now, and I know a lot about this, now that we are bringing people in, I want to be very deliberate. You all have been so super supportive. I think you get one of the first looks, right? We also have to look at our Legion and our BFW and our DAB and the Scotty Allison's of the world and those guys, Joe Vanny, right? We got to get those guys in because they've worked so long and so hard at this. We did tour our initial group, our twenty four that we'd identified. Not all hooked us up on it, but almost all did. Some of the veterans that are on the list were not able to come. They're maybe in a care home already, but family came and we did that all last Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Thursday. And I got to tell you, it was like, this has been a long process weighing on you, but to see the looks on their faces, it was pretty cool. They walked in. And they opened up. We had a ninety five year old veteran walking around and they're telling us that we can keep minnows in our jacuzzi tub that we can hang beer from our, from our ceiling lift. Oh, another one. Oh, the bike, recumbent bike. Gentlemen during the tour went climbed right on their recumbent bike therapy room, started writing that. There's going to be some characters and it's going to be awesome. So that kind of buoyed us up for them for the remaining push here. The plan as of right now, and I'd be, I'm careful to tell people that this is a plan, this is a target, that's a goal, but there's a bit of a hope as well that we will admit our first veterans of January twenty ninth. Some things have to still line up for us. We don't have our medical services, medical director contract yet with Stanford. I'm working with Dr. Dan Hoodie on that. It's moving, but it's going slower than I, than I needed to. We've got to fill some key staff positions during that time. We've got some good leads, we've got some good applications, but we need to get those built and trained. The building itself needs to have a few more things done before I'm comfortable bringing veterans in. The process will be, if we're able to get that January twenty ninth day, will be four veterans, yeah, all veterans to start, four veterans per calendar day for six days to get up to our twenty four. That is our plan. Trying to think if I missed anything big. We have all of our vehicles now from the Veterans Affairs. We've got a SUV and we've got a van with the lift and we've got a bus that we can take the veterans out. We've got our plow truck. Things are coming on a daily basis. So questions, I've been.
Could you talk a little bit more about the key positions you're still recruiting for?
In generalities, I can't. It's primarily direct care nursing. There's an admission coordinator position that I've had to re-recruit for that I need to get on for. Obviously very important when you're bringing in admissions. Got application process. So that's open through the twenty sixth. If you know any licensed social workers looking to fill that role. Direct care workers is our, is our primary issue right now, but I'm meeting literally every other day with my nursing leadership. We're going through names and we're going, where are they through the process? Are they at the reference checks? Are they in the verbal off route? Where, where are they in this process? We onboarded twelve primarily registered nurses over the this big setup, something like that, right? In December here, and now they're all working, getting oriented, they're cleaning, they're setting up beds, setting up the rooms. Right now the plan is to onboard about thirty one people on January third, fourth, fifth. We call it Neo New Employee Orientation. It is literally three days of training before they go into departmental specific training and we're probably going to have that with another third level of new employer orientation starting January seventeenth, because people that were onboarding aren't going to be starting by the third now. That's just not enough time for them to give notice to former employers or current employers, so to speak. So.
How about like director positions, the barber, maintenance workers?
I can't get into maintenance too much today because we've got some transition in that department, but the contracts, yeah. So, so there's, there's a big line in my head. What do we need to do to open and what don't we need to do to open? What can we do later? Barber, we can do after we open chapel and I can do after we open non-emergency transportation. I can do after we open. But things like the medical director, the attending provider, those are on the right side of the page. Those are, can't open without. So.
Any others?
Good problem. That's where I was going. I sent, I sent these photos to you folks. I, I think it's, I'm sorry. The photos that were all here were ones that I sent out to email to you all. Right. All right.
My question.
Yes.
Who does, who does all this training?
Who, who is? For new orientation? Yeah. Oh, we all do. Yep, I get to, I get to get up and speak a little bit and talk about, you know, the process, you know, Governor's Task Force two thousand and six and the case for another Minnesota Veterans Home in twenty thirteen, how it all came through with your help and getting the state funding and federal funding grand openly. I bring all that. We talk about mission vision of the home, the values of serving veterans. Then we go into our safety and security people and we go into our, you know, vulnerable adult reporting and it is honestly three days of training that if staff were not to do that, we'd have to do it all online. That's pretty grim. So we stack up our speakers, get people very engaged and so far, so good with that.
All right. All right, well, we certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will get you out there soon. There are, there are three more applications coming soon. Oh, thanks.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the First Children's Finance presentation. Dan, is that you or not? Tom, are that? There were a couple minutes earlier in the evening.
We can check with them and see where they are. Maybe they're having some trouble logging on.
Well, Mr. Chair, just while we're waiting, I just wanted to ask. Anne, I wanted to make sure, I should have said this while Kevin was still here. I wanted to make sure that they weren't in your building recruiting.
Yeah.
And you folks from First Children's Finance here, the county board?
Can hear you.
We can hear you.
Okay, great. And we can hear you as well. So thank you. Anne, I see you're at the podium. We'll let you introduce the group.
So, good afternoon, Commissioners Anne Lynn South, Director of Health and Human Services, and I am happy to introduce Michelle Hutchinson and Tricia Lee in from First Children's Finance. They're here to present information around a gap analysis that they have done for our Bemidji area. We had a presentation around childcare where you heard from some local supportive agencies around childcare back in August. And we had talked with First Children's Finance at that time requesting this gap analysis be completed. And so they're here today to present some information and generalities about childcare, but also the results of that study. So thank you, and I'll hand it over to Michelle and Tricia.
I think Tricia needs to share her screen, right? Okay, I am going to rely on the board to let me know if they can see what I'm sharing.
Yes.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started. As Anne said, hello, my name is Tricia Lee and I am the Business Development Manager for the western half of Minnesota with First Children's Finance. With me today is Michelle.
Hi, I'm from Thief River Falls and I represent the Northwest Region for First Children's Finance.
We start our presentation today with a quote from Chris Bevel. She said, if employees can't find quality care for their children, they won't work for you. They won't move to your community or they'll be forced to move away, or they might have to consider quitting their job to stay home with their children because they have no other option. The newspaper that you see to the right of the quote is from the Sunday Star Tribune back in two thousand and fourteen. This was front page Sunday paper news back in two thousand and fourteen, long before the pandemic hit. Since that time, the state of Minnesota has lost close to two thousand childcare programs. And that's not slots, that's entire businesses, childcare businesses, family and center that have closed. And so a little bit about First Children's Finance and what we do, we really work on three different levels with the goal of increasing the supply and business sustainability of excellent childcare. On the three different levels, we work directly with childcare businesses. We partner with providers to strengthen their operations and really achieve their dreams. And we're there to help them every step of the way. And that can be existing or startup programs, family or center. Then we work on a community level to analyze the supply of childcare and then identify some factors contributing to the shortages. We consult with communities to achieve a sustainable childcare supply that meets local economic and cultural needs. The supply and demand gap analysis that we're doing today is really falls in that community level consultation. And then we also work at the systems level, aligning and leveraging existing resources to build on the sustainability of childcare. We work to change public systems through advocacy and expertise and really elevate childcare and policies, practices, funding and plans. And help them understand the really unique business model that is early care and education in the state of Minnesota. So we started in nineteen ninety one as a community development financial institution. We became a nonprofit in two thousand and six, expanded, and we continue to grow today with most recently an office in Vermont and hopefully one in Oregon very soon. We also have a national team that works in any state that we don't have a state office in. And then we do have a collaboration with First Children's First Nations, which works with indigenous visioning to work with sovereign communities throughout the United States. Some different ways to engage again, region and community. We do the Rural Childcare Innovation Program. We do what's called the Childcare Strategic Supply Plan, which is kind of new. It is a smaller, more condensed version of and similar to the Rural Childcare Innovation Program, supply and demand gap analysis, and then really community collaboration. For individual professionals and business owners, we have startup and one-on-one consultations, lending, loans and grants, business analysis and modeling, crisis response and support. And currently, all of the consultation services that we are able to offer right now, whether that's at a community level or individual provider level, is provided free of charge, thanks to generous funding from the Department of Human Services and the Northwest Initiative Foundation. So why does this matter? We know that access to quality childcare and early education is vital to individual productivity and regional economic growth. We know that working parents can't access and maintain productive employment today without affordable quality care and education for their children. Tomorrow's workforce will not be prepared to succeed in the global economy unless all children receive quality care and education today. And the return on investment in quality care and education today reduces long-term costs to the And the return on investment in quality care and education today reduces long-term costs to the public and private sectors. And the return on investment is really high, uh, it's. The Minneapolis Federal Reserve estimates it's anywhere from a, it can be as high as a seventeen to one investment. And that investment really comes in the form of, um, lower high school dropout rates, less, uh, teenage pregnancies, higher future employment rates. Lower incarceration rates, um, higher homeownership later on, so it's an investment that's definitely worth taking. Childcare challenges in Minnesota. Uh, from June of two thousand twenty-two to June of twenty-three, Minnesota experienced a net loss of three hundred and twenty childcare programs. Uh, again, that's not slots, that's entire businesses. Uh, and this has been an ongoing trend. Last year, so it'd be June of twenty-one to June of twenty-twenty-two, uh, we saw a loss of five hundred and seventy. Uh, childcare programs throughout the state of Minnesota. And this has been an ongoing trend again, uh, in years prior, it's been anywhere between, uh, a hundred and eighty and three hundred and ten. That we've seen a net loss childcare program over the last, uh, we've been tracking this for about eight years now, and it's been very consistent. With that little bit of a peak post-COVID, uh, last year. In two thousand twenty-one, seventy-six percent of Minnesota families had all available parents in the labor force in the last twelve months. And we look at that strategically because we know with all or both available parents in the labor force. That those children ages, uh, zero to five really need quality, consistent, reliable, safe care. Uh, for the first five years, um, and that's seventy-six percent of our families. Uh, are relying and need that to be productive in their work. Cost of childcare in Minnesota. Uh, this is provided by Childcareware, it's kind of hard to see, so hopefully you have it in your packets. But one of the, uh, things that I really want to highlight from this slide specifically is that in Minnesota. The average price of infant care in a center-based program is over forty-two percent more than the average tuition and fees. At an in-state four-year public university. So today's childcare provider is an early educator and they're responsible for wearing many hats. Uh, most of us in our work lives wear many hats right now. Uh, if you work in childcare, you could probably add, uh, fifty more to this custodian, uh, you know. I can't even list the number that you can put it on there, but, uh, they're expected to act like a market-based industry. They provide services, they create jobs, they're expected to be sustainable. They're expected to act like a social service agency, they support parents and families with multiple services. They're expected to act like an economic development driver, like bridges and roads, they enable parents to go to work, businesses to grow, and they're developing future workers. And they're also expected to act like school systems, prepare the next generation for kindergarten and beyond. We'll discuss, um, kind of the different, uh, modes of, uh, licensing, there are center childcare. Right now, in the state of Minnesota, there are DHS licensed childcare centers. And there are certified centers, certified centers are new in the state of Minnesota. Uh, probably around twenty sixteen, I think was the, um, start of certification. And certified programs are really reserved for ages thirty-three months and older, so that would be preschool age in a center. And the programs that are eligible for certification would be public school districts. YMCA's, uh, YWCA's, and it may be the Lutheran Social Services. I'm not sure on the last one, but I know that the first three, public schools, YMCA's and YWCA's. Uh, and it's, uh, for thirty-three months and older programs, so typically preschool. Uh, childcare centers, everybody else, uh, that is operating would have to do licensing as a center that's organized under Rule Three. It regulates areas such as square footage, outdoor play space, toilets and sinks. If there are any early childhood individuals in the audience or anybody who has experience. Uh, working in childcare center licensing, you know that that is the shortest list of center regulations you'll ever see in your life. Because the actual list, uh, is about ten times longer than that. Um, and there's multiple regulating agencies, there's the Department of Human Services. There's the Child and Adult Care Food Program, which is actually administered right now by the Department of Education. You have Fire Marshal, local zoning ordinances, and then the Department of Health. We'll look at just a couple of performance models, these performance models were actually just updated. Uh, this fall, and they include Great Start Compensation Support Payments in the model. So if you know anything about Great Start Compensation Support Payments, or if you don't, I encourage you. Um, to look into some of the investments that have been made this year into early care and education. But it does have those payments in there, three sixty-five per full-time staff. Uh, this is a fifty-seven seat performance model. It assumes a childcare center located in price cluster two, we'll talk about price clusters as we go. Uh, it's using the seventy-fifth percentile rates from the twenty-twenty-one market rate survey. Startup costs of two hundred thousand plus fifteen hundred a month in rent. Wages range from fourteen to eighteen dollars an hour with the director making twenty-one dollars an hour. This program loses seventy-five thousand dollars a year. It would have to operate at a hundred and six percent occupancy to break even. And this includes over sixty-nine thousand dollars per year of those Great Start Compensation Grants in its budget. So even with the sixty-nine thousand, this program loses close to seventy-six thousand dollars a year. Size really matters depending on the price cluster that a program is located in or the rates that they're charging, and parents can afford to pay. Not only does size matter, but the breakout of ages also. Um, we know that typically in a price cluster one or two setting. An infant room of eight overall loses roughly fifty to sixty thousand dollars per year in operation. If, uh, you get to a toddler age range, you would expect at a seven-to-one ratio that that room is starting to break even or might lose a little bit. The preschoolers at a ten-to-one ratio are starting to make money and be a little bit more profitable. And the schoolagers at a fifteen-to-one ratio, uh, would bring in the most income into a center. As you can see here, they only have fifteen schoolagers, twenty preschoolers, eight infants and fourteen toddlers. If you were to add more infants, you would expect to see that loss grow drastically year by year. You have to have enough preschoolers and schoolagers to offset those infants and toddlers in order to make a program be sustainable. Now we'll look at a hundred and fourteen-seat center, again, this is price cluster two, seventy-fifth market rates. Um, startup costs of four hundred thousand plus three thousand dollars a month rent. Wages range from fourteen to eighteen dollars an hour with the director making twenty-one. This program has doubled in size from the previous. It has sixteen, it's licensed for sixteen infants, twenty-eight toddlers, forty preschoolers and thirty schoolagers. Again, this model includes three sixty-five per full-time staff of those Great Start Compensation Support Payments. And is estimated to bring in roughly a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year through that grant program as additional income to help. Help with the, uh, wage increases. This one center, uh, with a hundred and twenty-five thousand of additional income per year from that grant program. Will profit ten thousand dollars at the end of the year. It would have to maintain ninety-two percent occupancy at all times, uh, to break even. And so this program shows a profit, profit, and for the size of the center, these profits are really slim. They don't leave a lot of wiggle room, uh, and this definitely wouldn't have been, um, the type of wiggle room I would want in a year where something like COVID happens. Uh, it's also crazy to think that this program, while it is profiting ten thousand dollars. Is only able to profit ten thousand dollars because it's receiving a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year from Great Start Grants. Otherwise, this program would be offered, operating over a hundred thousand in the hole. Uh, and as you can see with this modeling, uh, you have two infant rooms. Well, if each infant room is operating at about fifty thousand dollars loss per year. Um, that is gonna have a drastic impact, if you remove and drop that capacity from sixteen down to eight, you can reduce that deficit by about fifty thousand. So you have to be really strategic in the ratios and the setup of your program. And understanding each of the classrooms and their income to ensure that you have a sustainable program. And so the cost of delivery is really high for childcare center programs, we see staffing at about seventy to seventy-five percent of a center's budget. Facilities at around twenty, food is about five percent. And this does not leave a lot left over for programmatic expenses and profitability. Um, and if there was any wiggle room, and keep in mind, everything else, that's the glitter, that's Play-Doh, that is. Uh, construction paper, markers, crayons, that's everything else that goes into operating a successful, uh, and sustainable childcare program. With the increase of inflation and food, most of that has been cut out and you'll see, uh, most centers relying really heavily on donations to try and offset. Some of those costs. Now we'll look at family childcare, family childcare is organized under Rule Two for the licensing of family and group family childcare programs. It's licensed through the county instead of through the state like centers are, so they're all licensed by the Department of Human Services. But with family childcare, you have your local county licenser, uh, that is licensing the program. These licensing provides regulations in areas such as the process, negative licensing actions, agency records, caregiver qualifications. Licensed capacity and child and adult ratios. Family childcare programs can serve a mixed age group of children from six weeks to eleven years of age within. Serve between ten and fourteen kids, depending on the class of their license. And programs licensed to serve ten or twelve children can do so with one provider. For programs wishing to serve fourteen, as you can see on that C-three license, there must be a helper within the program. Let's see, and it also really limits the number of infants, so as you're looking at family childcare licensing. Um, you can see the regulations for the number of children under school age and a. Kind of that probationary license for year one providers, so a max capacity of ten, and at least for that first year. Uh, possibly more, maintaining, uh, no more than six children under school age. So of those six children under school age, three may be infants and toddlers with a maximum of two infants, so. You can have two infants and one toddler, um, one infant and two toddlers, but you could never have three infants. You could have three toddlers, um, but there's nothing saying that you have to have any infants or toddlers in your program. You could choose, and what some programs do choose to utilize is, um, just preschool and school age. And filling and maximizing their programs that way, and so that can be done with the C-one, C-two or C-three license also. Family childcare expenses, so this slide represents what typically, uh, we would see family childcare expenses look like. On average, providers report annual expenses of about thirty-three thousand with two-thirds of program expenses going towards occupancy. Food is another really high expense area for family childcare programs. When you look at this budget specifically, the food at about twelve thousand is actually pretty low. We've seen that, uh, drastically climb over the last few years. However, when we work with family childcare programs in general, the majority of the time, what they'll report as a food expense. Um, is what is claimable on a food program. And we know that most family programs and center programs supplement with additional food that. Uh, doesn't necessarily qualify for reimbursement on the food program. So while you may be providing, um, we had one provider and it was just their philosophy that. In the summertime, every single child got a popsicle every Wednesday and Friday afternoon, that was their thing, they had popsicles outside in the summertime. Those popsicles were not reimbursable expenses, so when we would get their costs from them on how much did you spend on food. They were able to really easily and quickly pull a report on what they submitted for food reimbursement. But we're missing all of those little things that they added on that made their program really unique, um, but were also expenses. Uh, that provider would not have purchased eight hundred popsicles in the span of three months if it wasn't for operating a childcare program out of their home. And so while we see twelve thousand here, the food, the true food costs for most programs are drastically higher. So again, this is based on a performance model that was created, uh, this fall. It is based on twenty twenty-one market rates, cluster two, seventy-fifth percentile. The expenses are averages, uh, we work with so many family childcare clients in the past, uh, years that were able to get some really good averages. And it also includes those monthly Great Start Compensation payment income for the provider for the fifty-three hours a week. That they are providing care and have children in their home other than their own. Without this grant program, you could decrease this income by about six thousand eight hundred and forty per year. So this family provider is bringing in about five hundred and seventy a month in those compensation support payments. This, uh, assumes they're enrolling eleven children with full-time weekly rates. And when converted to an hourly wage, this provider is making about fifteen dollars and forty-six cents an hour before any taxes. So while fifty-three thousand, um, as an average annual profit or salary might seem, um, really great. Uh, depending on which area you live in and, and your style of living, they're working sixty-five hours a week. They're open and providing care and have children in their home for fifty-three hours. Plus, they're working an additional twelve hours a week outside of that direct care. Doing, um, administrative tasks, reporting for the food program and paperwork, their grocery shopping, lesson planning and prepping for the next day. Uh, there's a ton of additional hours that go into, uh, providing care that doesn't necessarily happen, uh, one-on-one when you're providing direct care for children. Some basic approaches to providing family childcare outside of the home. Um, so there is, under Rule Two, statute two-four-five A. Provides for special family childcare licenses to be granted to an employer providing a childcare service to its employees. A church or religious organization, community collaborative childcare provider, a not-for-profit agency. Or it could be a non-residential childcare program in a dwelling on a residential lot or in a commercial lot. The trilemma of a childcare business is that each of these areas, uh. Impact the profitability of the childcare business, the quality of care afforded to families and the accessibility of care are all really important. However, increasing any of the three will have a direct and possibly negative impact on the other two. Uh, for example, increasing the quality of a program oftentimes costs money. Therefore, the increasing cost will either affect the program's profitability. Or if the program increases tuition to cover the increase in costs, the program may become less accessible to families accordingly. And so these are all important aspects of a childcare business and finding the right balance can be a real challenge. We'll look at the economic impact of childcare. So through, uh, our community consulting, we do the Rural Childcare Innovation Program. Uh, we do a surveying of communities all across the state of Minnesota. And the Rural Childcare Innovation Program with hence the name, only, uh, we only conduct that in rural Minnesota. So the greater parts of Minnesota, we've done a ton of communities over the last five years, specifically the last few years accumulating the data. And one of the questions that we ask when we survey communities, we ask both parents and employees and employers. The same questions, and we ask them to list the work issues that have occurred due to childcare arrangements in the last twelve months. And as you can see, um, absence from work, we've seen seventy-seven percent of employers that have been surveyed throughout greater Minnesota. Have struggled with absenteeism from work, uh, with their employees, fifty-four percent struggling with tardiness to work. Thirty-five percent, the inability to work different shifts, inability to work overtime, inability to be fully productive. Even down to those that, um, have experienced employees being unable to accept a promotion because of childcare challenges. Or feeling that they weren't considered for a promotion because of it. Again, some more data that is collected through that RCCIP survey. We asked parents and employees, uh, if they have ever withdrawn from the workforce or declined employment due to childcare issues. And thirty-five percent of parents reported that they have. They have either withdrawn from the workforce or declined employment strictly due to childcare issues or arrangements. We asked employers, has the shortage of childcare impacted your ability to attract employees? Forty-nine percent of those who tracked that data said yes. We asked them if it's impacted their ability to retain employees, forty-six percent said yes. Um, and this is a really interesting statistic that, uh, I love to. Um, and this is a really interesting statistic that uh, I love to bring attention to. One of the questions that we ask and the reason that we changed uh, the name of the survey, it used to be called the parent survey. Uh, now it's really become an impair a parent slash employee survey. Because we've learned through RCCIP that there are fifty-five percent of families in Greater Minnesota. Have indicated that they are either choosing not to have a child altogether. Or choosing not to have more children because of the childcare crisis in the state of Minnesota. Um, and so that is really impactful. That's fifty-five percent of families that are. Um, altogether not having children are limiting the size of their family. They're making family planning decisions based on and around childcare availability. That's fifty-five percent of our future workforce uh, that right now isn't coming into the world. And so we need to do something about that, especially in rural Minnesota. Uh, our workforce is our livelihood and our families coming back and coming back to Greater Minnesota and returning is really important. And you can see some pretty impactful quotes. Uh, we had a resident say, I would consider having kids if childcare wasn't such a huge issue. As it stands, I'll probably never have them unless I decide to quit my job. You can also see a really impactful link on the chat between the childcare crisis. And out-of-home placement rates in the state of Minnesota, uh, and it isn't necessarily due to the fact that. Um, we just, you know, have really drastically reduced our out-of-home placement rates. We have done a lot of work to address that in Minnesota. But one of the common themes that we see in a lot of these surveys and in the responses. Uh, we'll hear from parents or individuals who state very openly that they would consider being a foster family. However, they can't risk losing their job and there is no childcare available. So we are seeing links that the childcare crisis is having a direct impact. On families and their willingness to go into foster care and accept foster placements because most of them. Um, are relying on two-income households. Or for example, in one survey, you know, they provide the benefits for their entire family. And so while they'd be willing to accept uh, an intake at two in the morning. They need to be able to and guaranteed to get to their job at six AM and right now that isn't an option, so. Uh, this has a huge impact on community vitality altogether. We'll look at some very specific data for Beltrami County. So in front of you, you see what we call the SDG. So this is the Beltrami County Childcare Needs Analysis. You can see the zip codes that were included. Um, we did, I know that some of those zips uh, can go into different uh, county boundaries, however, they probably touch. Beltrami or they're included in a school district area that uh, is primarily located within the county. And so within those zip codes, there are eighty-six licensed family childcare programs. And I want to clarify that that's licensed with the Department of Human Services. There are five childcare centers that are licensed by the Department of Human Services. And you'll see zero certified childcare centers. I want to preface that all of the data you see on our slides moving forward, we will show the exempt programs. Focuses strictly on birth to five. And so we're only looking at and only concerned with uh, ages zero to five under school age. Um, so right now there are not any certified childcare centers that are providing. Um, all day, every day, year-round childcare uh, in uh, in the county. There are several that are providing the school age uh, or preschool school year only. But none that are providing um, all day, every day, year-round care. Um, and that's what we really focus on is uh, the slots needed to maintain full-time year-round employment for parents. So of those programs, we are showing a childcare capacity of nine hundred and twenty-five. In the zip codes, and that's for ages zero to five. You can see the birth to five spots needed. Throughout the county, there's about twelve hundred. And uh, school district thirty-one, which is Bemidji, there is the need for one thousand one hundred and ninety-six. And when you look at uh, all of the individual zip codes, we're showing a need of one thousand three hundred and eleven. The reason that those vary is because zip code boundaries do not align with county boundaries. Uh, which do not align remotely closely with school district boundaries. Uh, so we have to take all of that into account and you can see the different numbers there. In Beltrami, there are two thousand ninety-two children under the age of five that have all parents working. And that is seventy percent of those parents. So seventy percent of families with children under five. Have all available parents in the workforce, which aligns really closely with what we saw in that twenty twenty-one statistic. Then we did an even deeper dive. We looked at the different costs uh, for centers and family childcare. This is county level data from the two thousand twenty-one market rate study. We're looking at the fiftieth percentile for both. Meaning that in each category, fifty percent of providers charge less than what you see here. And fifty percent of providers in that cluster charge more than what you see here. This data was also pulled in the fall of two thousand twenty and early uh, winter of twenty uh, twenty-one. So if you can remember back, that was the depths of COVID. That was the first school year back to school after COVID. Most schools were in. Distance or hybrid learning, um, there were really strict regulations and I think providers were just bombarded with surveys. And there was a serious lack of survey responses, which has had a pretty drastic impact on these uh, market race rate clusters. Um, right now, currently the state is in the process of updating that market rate study. So the surveys have gone out, they are, or they're still being filled out. And that newest market rate study should be available, I think in February of two thousand twenty-four. So we should be seeing the new information soon. Centers in the county are in price cluster three. And family childcare falls in price cluster two. You could see that at the fiftieth percentile, right in the middle, it's about five hundred and sixty-three per month for preschool for family childcare throughout the county. And about eight hundred and fifty-eight per month for preschool for in a childcare center. When you look at that need, and I think this was kind of one of those uh, big questions that what the county was interested in. What is the infant toddler need? Because we know uh, that infant and toddler care is really expensive to provide. It's costly, there are strict ratios for it. Um, it's, you know, it, most programs and centers operate at a negative when they have an infant program. And family programs are just flat out limited to the number of infant slots that they can have. There are specific uh, specialized infant and toddler family childcare programs. Uh, and licensing options, those would be B licenses or a, a D license. However, there's a drastic limit on the number of children you can take. And so with those B licenses, it maxes you at a capacity of five or six in a family childcare program. Which makes the sustainability and financial um, implications of that program really difficult to support. Uh, and provide a livable wage or income. So of the need within the zip codes, forty percent is infant and toddler. And that is based directly off of birth rate statistics from the Department of Health. So those are babies that have been born in the last uh, year and a half. So we know that they exist. Again, that's forty percent of the need, but keep in mind, those babies have been born. So we know that of the babies born, they are forty percent of that need. There's over fifty percent of families that are still waiting. And holding off on having a child or another child because this need exists. Imagine if we could take that need away, what that would look like. Now we'll break it out by zip code. So you can see um, all of the different uh, zip codes, the cities, the number of centers, the number of family providers. And the expected childcare need uh, by zip code. With a total of uh, one thousand three hundred and eleven. We'll look at that full-time capacity. So there's eighty-six family childcare programs, five centers. With their max capacity. So there is a grand total max capacity of one thousand eighty-eight. But we really need to look at expected capacity, which is nine twenty-five. Because we know, and we work with centers and family programs all throughout the state. We know that most programs and even the best operating programs cannot operate at one hundred percent capacity. One hundred percent of the time, year-round. It's just not practical. Um, and we know that programs need to account for delayed start dates, child transition times. Um, and we know that we don't accept, get income from a hundred percent of the families, one hundred percent of the time either. Uh, in most centers and even in family programs, it's not like school. Uh, and when a child enters school, you're five, honor before September first, you go to first grade. Uh, on September first, you go to second grade on September first. It would be great if it was like that, but babies aren't all born on September first. And unfortunately, the way that the age breakdowns are for both family and center, it's dependent upon their birth date. And so you have to hold spots all throughout the year. So while all of their preschoolers might go to kindergarten on September first. Now they might only have a few of those preschoolers in that room and you might see that room sit at about eight inch in uh, September. But they have to hold spots because that toddler is going to move up in October. They're going to turn thirty-three months old in October. Another toddler turns thirty-three months old the end of December. Another one turns thirty-three months old. Uh, in February and March and April, and you're holding those spots for all of those kiddos that have to move up. According to their birth date at weird month range breakouts. Uh, and same within the infant room, they transition from infant to toddler at sixteen months in a center. Family childcare uh, age breakout is a little bit different, twelve months, twenty-four months. So you're holding spots for those kiddos to move up. Some other excluded care offerings, like we were talking before. There are uh, two head start programs and two part-time school year preschool programs. Those would be. Um, kind of like your traditional church-based programs where they don't operate all year round. Maybe they only operate for three hours, like eight to eleven in the mornings, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Um, or they're not available to all parents, you know, maybe they only reach a very specific or strict demographic. So we have removed them from our analysis. So there are two head start programs and two part-time school year programs totaling two hundred and sixty spots. If you were to look up DHS licensing for the county, you would see them included. However, they don't provide all-day, every-day, year-round care um, for parents that are uh, needing that for work purposes. There's those certified childcare programs we were talking about. There are seven school age and three preschool, school-year-only programs. Uh, they have a variable number of spots and they aren't held to capacity the same way that a center and a family program are. And then some other school age programs. So there are uh, four center-based programs in, that are providing seventy-two school age spots. Again, since our analysis focuses strictly on birth to five, we have removed all of the school age slots from the analysis. So if you have a center program that a certain percentage of their center is reserved for school age slots, we've removed those numbers from the analysis. And same with family childcare programs. Uh, there are only so many children under the age of school age that a family license can provide care for. And so we've removed those school age slots from the analysis as well. To really dive deep and get that uh, true birth to five slot capacity number. And so we have removed two hundred and fifty-four spots from all of the family childcare programs that are strictly reserved for school age children. Another uh, piece that I would like to highlight, uh, that is not included in the analysis. And so while some census and birth rate data is publicly available for the zip codes above, so Panima, Redbee and Red Lake. Uh, which are a part of Red Lake Nation, licensing data for tribally licensed program is not publicly sourced data. I was able to touch base with Ruby, who is the licenser for the Red Lake Nation. And she did share with me that there are currently, uh, as of yesterday, nine licensed family childcare programs. On, in the Red Lake Nation and one uh, licensed childcare center. Uh, she also stated that there is no capacity data available for those programs. Uh, but she was able to share that there are forty-two students currently enrolled in that childcare center. Um, but there isn't necessarily a capacity, a max capacity that she was able to give me. So when you look at our data, just know that the expected childcare need is there. But all of that licensing data for the nine family childcare programs and the one childcare center. Uh, doesn't exist in publicly sourced data that we could pull or access. Nor do they have maximum capacities that we could utilize. So please keep that in mind. You'll see three hundred and ninety-nine of the need. Reflected in the analysis, uh, does not have the associating slots uh, to offset that. We look at the Beltrami County inflow-outflow. So you can kind of see uh, the. Uh, we look at this as an economic development driver, right? So we pulled the inflow-outflow for Beltrami so that you could have a visual. Uh, for how many people come into and leave the area for work. From the slide, you can see that you have six thousand four hundred and forty-five people coming into the county to work. And six thousand fifty-one leaving for work and twelve thousand that stay within the county. As you consider adding childcare programming to the county, it would probably be helpful for you to think about where your employment base is traveling in from. Uh, and what they're traveling out for and why. Um, it's possible that some families will choose to enroll their children in childcare programs in the communities for which they work. And that's something we always want to stress. We don't want uh, employees to leave our area because of childcare. Because if you have to drive out of your way and go outside of the county or the community for childcare. At some point, it's just logical that you may start looking for work where your childcare is, right? So if you already have to drive uh, to a certain community for childcare, what if a job became available? And we know that there are jobs available everywhere. So now you have childcare in another community and you have work in another community. Eventually, logistically, you're probably going to start looking for homes and housing in that other community. So how can we keep them and make that, you know, maintaining inside the county? We need to add six thousand to that and get that up to about eighteen thousand. We want to keep them in the county. We'd still love to bring more in, uh, but we don't want that other six thousand leaving because why are they leaving? Is it because childcare was available there, so they found employment elsewhere? It's possible. And so how is that need supported today? So there's a pretty big need and you can see that gap. Uh, of children to slots that are available. And we know that they're not just out sitting on the street corner because they have nowhere to go and they're not a visible presence. Um, and so a lot of times I think historically, this is, we talk about out of sight, out of mind. You don't see it, so you don't realize that the need exists. And so how has that been supported? How has it been so invisible to us previously? Well, variances. Historically, some communities have supported the gap by allowing licensers to provide variances to existing licensed capacity. Uh, it's not a long-term solution and it's really dependent upon each individual licenser. Um, out-of-area care, this is what we just talked about and that's uh, children being taken to childcare outside of our study area to seek care. And that's what we don't want to see. We don't want uh, employees leaving the area. We look at unemployment and then we look at underemployment and shift alignment. So underemployment. Some parents take different work or change the shifts they're working to accommodate for providing care for their children. Uh, so that might be like a, a mother that's working the day shift and a dad that's working the night shift. Uh, just to offset the need for childcare and have somebody at home at all times. Uh, we could also talk about the impact that that has when you look at quality. Um, and safety for early care and education, because at some point, somebody has to sleep during the day if they're working the night shift. And what does that really look like uh, for those children and depending on their ages? Underemployment is when we'll see somebody work outside of their field to accommodate the schedules required to care for their children. Um, it's really hard to find rotating childcare uh, schedules or somebody that can accommodate a rotating work shift. We'll see this a lot in nursing. Um, a lot of nursing shifts are rotating or they're twelve-hour shifts. Or they are um, every other week with uh, differing days. To find a childcare program that accommodates that is really difficult. Most programs have gone to flat weekly rates. Um, and so the affordability of that can impact your decision. So a lot of times we'll see. Um, you know, maybe it's a nurse that could be working as an RN, but has decided to work as. As an administrative assistant at a school because finding care from eight to three, Monday through Friday with no holidays. Uh, was a lot easier than trying to find uh, childcare that would align and work with their work schedule. We look at legal non-licensed and illegal licensed care. And I want to look at these both together because it's really easy to unintentionally. Uh, travel from one to the other. And so this is.
Who's, who's speaking right now? Is it Trish?
Trish, yeah.
Uh, Trish, I think we've really gone over the time slot that we had for this. Is there a way you can wrap this up so we can um, have a couple of questions and, and then go from there?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll rock through this. You have this, does everybody have the slides?
Yeah, uh, we have a set.
Perfect. Okay, so these are just the last slide that I would probably want to look at then is going to be this one. And it is family childcare by the numbers, eighty-six. Uh, family childcare providers in the county, they are carrying. Eighty-six uh family childcare providers in the county, they are carrying a very heavy load uh or percentage of the weight. For licensed slots in the county. We look at two categories specifically, less than five years and more than twenty years. We look at those two categories because less than five years usually has a really high rate of turnover. We'll see family providers get into the field with the intention of I'm just going to do this for the first five years until my kid goes to kindergarten. And then I'm going to go into the field I intended. So. That less than five years has a really high rate of turnover. And then we look at more than twenty. Because those providers are headed towards a much earned and deserved retirement. When you look at your analysis, nearly sixty percent. Of your family providers fall in one of those two categories. So there's, you know, it's really important for the county to look at retention of those in the less than five years. How can we support them and keep them in the field and keep those slots open? And what can we do uh to replace those providers that are about to retire in the more than twenty? You can read a little bit about parent aware and see how those rates compare throughout the county and you are. Doing a great job at having three and four star rated programs better than state average. You can see the market rates. You can see center and family compared to one another. You could see the C cap reimbursement rates that just increased in October. The twenty percent quality differential. This is for programs that are highly accredited or four-star parent aware rated. They receive a twenty percent quality differential. Some factors contributing. And then really focusing on local resources, right-sized solutions and innovation to create sustainable supply. Now, let's head right into questions.
Do we have questions now that? People need to ask or can we uh?
Mister Chair, I'd like to ask one question. Trish, have you uh, you know, what are some specific? Ideas, um things the county can do to. Address the shortages. Um are there things that other counties around the state are doing that you've seen be successful? What are uh? You know, a couple of ideas.
Yeah, so we have seen some really great local grants programs uh that the counties have started to set up. Uh and those are emergency support type grants, but also we've seen counties start um startup grants. That is something that doesn't exist a lot throughout the state. There are not a lot of funding opportunities for startups for childcare centers. Or family programs, and they're incredibly expensive upfront to get up and running. And so having the county support that and um. Provide startup grants or retention grants or emergency grants. Uh like a provider that says, I had a tree come down on my fence, I have to replace my fence right away, or the licensers. I'm going to have to close me down because I don't have a safe outdoor space. Having those funds readily available to support existing providers. Uh bringing in additional training and resources. We've also seen um. Municipalities, whether that's centi-center or county, start to get actively involved in supporting programs. Um we have, I just before this, which I appreciate Zoom. I was meeting with the city of Laverne down in far southwest Minnesota. Uh and their city council is looking at supporting and actually completely renovating. A childcare center for a nonprofit to come in. Um and they're doing all of the legwork and they're looking at it as as an economic development lens. The center is going to be three times larger than their actual current need, and their goal is to bring families back to the community that have left. For other reasons, whether that's work or childcare, but um looking at growth. Um I think there's also investing in your existing providers. Um you have a very large portion in that zero to five. We have to get them past that five-year mark. If we can get them past five years. Um they'll probably get suckered into early childhood for life like the rest of us did. So. If we can get them to year six, that passion will take over and they'll probably continue operating. Um and I would encourage some um. You know, focus groups or discussions with existing providers to see how we can best support them. How what what they need. Other counties have looked into substitute programs and pools. Um anything I'm missing, Michelle?
Um yeah, Becker County has their fund for childcare emergencies or. Or ways to help retain.
Yep, and they have the substitute pool.
And then Stevens County.
Yeah, so Stevens County, if you're not familiar with that initiative also, they used uh quite a bit of funding. Uh to develop six family childcare units. Anytime we go anywhere, we're usually hand-in-hand, you know, working with economic development officials, and the two biggest issues in any community are housing and childcare. When you look at those number of programs that have closed over the years in the state of Minnesota. This last year is one of the first years we've actually seen a net gain of centers. But the net loss of family programs outweighed that this year to total through a net loss of over three hundred. Uh and because of that, what we're seeing is. There's housing is an issue. Most uh people are struggling to get into affordable housing. And as family providers leave the field and retire, it's not like they're giving up their homes for another family program to come in and operate. They're living in their homes, they're retiring in their homes, they're uh staying there. So there isn't that, you know, space available.
Trish, we really need to move on at this point.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for the informative presentation.
Yes, if there's anything else we can help you with, don't hesitate, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Ruth?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thanks for the opportunity and thanks, Tom, for inviting me to uh. Come up and just talk about some of the PIO work that I've been doing. Chris Muller, Beltrami County Emergency Manager PIO. Two pages, no slides, we'll get close to caught up. But the biggest project that I've been working on since uh becoming the county PIO has been jail messaging and working with the communications team. Uh that we've uh been doing. Uh both internal and external communications, uh our planning efforts that we did, I think were very successful. Uh initially, we were looking at working with a PR firm to do some of that canvassing and some of that uh work that we did do. Uh in community outreach and engagement and. After the vote came in, I actually was contacted by a couple of the PR firms and they were like. Who did you guys go with? And I said, well. Short story. A short story, we uh we looked at our community and we said, we know our community best. We know how to. Uh effectively communicate with our neighbors, and that's exactly what we did. And some of them remarked that they've never seen a. Referendum with a ninety-seven percent approval. So kudos to everybody for the work uh that they did with that. Uh with that, I've attended uh many community meetings and providing uh public information uh on the jail project. And by far, one of the biggest questions is. Why can't it be built where it is or somewhere downtown? And I think. Uh developing that uh short, two-page uh jail replacement fact sheet is a really easy way to communicate that without having to. Uh explain everything over again. Attended and assisted the uh both the Senate and House Capital Investment Business at the jail. Uh one of the highlights that I've done is the PIO is in September, I assist uh assisted with the. Uh Minnesota Missing Murdered and Indigenous Relatives Collaborative Search. Uh that was held self-abimigi for the many missing uh indigenous relatives that we have uh both uh in our community and our region. Uh it was a really good opportunity to work with MMIR. Their PIO. Was actually out with COVID, so the Department of Public Safety's PIO came up here and we were pretty much tied at the hip and we got to work. Uh together. I learned a lot from him, Holly Pedelea was a really great guy to work with. Uh been assisting uh with county newsletter, both uh with. Uh content as well as approving and editing uh of the most current newsletter. Continue to support and transition uh the new. Uh nine-one-one supervisor and the training that she still has coming up, and also the technology upgrades that support our communications within the sheriff's office and the county. Been working on a lot of press releases with many different uh departments. Uh in the county, which was the the intent, and I'm glad to have the opportunity uh to do that. Assisted in emergency management and public information planning uh regarding red pine estates. Uh with an emphasis on recognizing the hard work that was going on uh in the background that was obviously not visi- uh not always visible to the public. Have engaged uh with a redesign of the Beltrami County website, which we're going to see momentarily. Uh assisted the jail reset coordinator to create a Facebook group. That is intended for her clients to share resources. Now. It's not a Facebook page, so it's not promoting the reset program. It's an opportunity for her to engage with her clients. Because one thing that she said is, Chris. I need to be able to communicate them when they don't have data, when they don't have cell service, but they're going to places that have wifi. They can still get on Facebook. So we discussed it and we came up with a private Facebook group. That her clients are able to come in there and they're able to still uh have her assistance as they reintegrate back into our community. We came up with a uh pretty cool catchphrase, helping you help you. And I think that just is really empowering. Uh for the work that she does as they improve their lives. Early conversations with Shane, the VSO, how about a Facebook page that he would like to create that's dedicated to veterans services? I think that's a great opportunity because. Not everything that he posts is going to be applicable to the entire county. So I think that's a really good uh opportunity to move forward with that. I'm also uh working on emergency management projects that were put on the back burner, some that have been on the back burner for quite a while. Uh and need to be dusted off as we uh rewrite the county's emergency operations plan. Last week, we held a tabletop exercise with community partners uh over at our EOC. And the scenario was a ice storm, and we wanted to emphasize on internal and external communications between all partners. Uh we had a long list of participants from. Law enforcement, highway department, public health, health and human services, fire, EMS, the school district, BSU, Sanford Health, Leech Lake Emergency Management. And our utility partners. So it was a really uh successful exercise. Where we were able to identify some of our deficiencies while highlighting our areas of expertise. I did have a couple of other things, but in the interest of time, I will move on so Diane can show you the new website.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Diane, it's in your lap. Bridge over troubled water. Yeah, that's the one that they rebuilt just a couple of years ago. I'm sure we made that uh built that bridge for that.
Oh, yes.
You know. Your guess. Oops.
Practice it three times.
Maybe you practice it one too many times.
Hey Joel, we're going to get started with what we've got here.
Leave it to technology.
Yeah.
That other one lasted so long that it used up its buffer maybe. Okay, so I will just start out, um I'll go through some of it back. We started out um way back in April, May during the budget process and did a. A enhancement request for funds to redesign the website. That was approved during the budget cycle for a sixty thousand dollar budget. With ARPA dollars to redo the entire county website. I hear it, yeah. We had issues with, some of the biggest problems was ADA compliance, being mobile friendly, the flow of the website. The outdated look and navigation of the website, all that stuff. So after we got that approval, we created a committee of myself and Chris and the Kevins, Kevin Trapp and Kevin Warren. And we developed an RFP to go out for proposals to find somebody to help us and do the work. We advertised on the website, we emailed it, we did research with other counties, got it sent out there. We ended up getting twenty-two. People applying for the project, which was. Which was amazing and got us by surprise for sure. So we then reviewed all those, came up with the top four that we liked as a committee. Um we came up with the criteria and some questions and we interviewed those top four firms. When we got done, we all compared notes and our full committee kind of unanimously agreed on the one that we chose, which was this. G H D Digital is the name of the firm that we picked. So then after that, we um had a contract that came before the board and had you sign that. To get started with the process. We started working on it. We signed a contract with them for thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars. And then about a six thousand dollar annual maintenance support. six thousand dollar annual maintenance support, updates, all that kind of stuff. So we came in well under our allowed amount of money and we're pretty I we've been pretty good and happy with their selection. They've been very helpful so far. They respond to things pretty fast. I went through this stuff a whole bunch of times today and it all worked great. So based on what just happened, though, I make no promises as to what's gonna happen now. Um right there, you're getting a look at the homepage. Where we're at now and keep in mind, we're still working on things. Our go live is hopefully the beginning of January. We've got another meeting tomorrow to just fine tune what happens with the go live process, all that work. We're continually updating pages, adding content, fixing content. Um some of the most important highlights are the things to think about is completely different from the old website. The way to find stuff and get around is not through the department. So if you try to take the point of view of a person in the public looking for a service, they don't necessarily know who does the service or what department it is. So we've tried to and we've used models from other counties. We had a citizen survey on the website for a while to get feedback from the actual people using it. And with all that information, we came up with our best guess at how to make it fast and easy for somebody looking for whatever it is they're looking for on the website. So the categories at the top, the first four are the areas where we put the links to the most common idea, concept, search, whatever it is you're looking for, while keeping the department tab there to give you at least quick contact information to that department if you know who you're really trying to reach at that point. The next row of buttons are quick links to the seven most commonly sought pieces of information by the public. Board minutes, I'll just see if we can look at a couple of them. That page is gonna change now with the new site. It's a calendar. And we'll, I'll have all the dates in there and then the the dates with the link to the meeting, the link to the agenda, the minutes, and we can link to the YouTube on here. And you can view it by month, you can search it. Uh you can subscribe to it and I'll talk a little bit more about that when I get to the bottom of the homepage. So we'll just continue down the homepage. The next section of the page here is for items that are kind of long-term, short-term. So they're, they're longer than just a quick news notice, but there's something that'll be out there, not indefinitely, not forever. For instance, the jail project. That one, that um is a very hot topic for a while and lots of information for the public that will be there for quite some time. And as new things rise to the surface, this is kind of a new one here. Um that's upcoming, an example of that bid packages for forest activities is on there. So those will just fluctuate depending on what's going on. And then the bottom of the page, the what's happening, these are public notices and news feeds, kind of like we do now on the homepage. But we've got three categories of them and they will always have the latest item featured on the homepage with a view all piece that goes to like the archive where everyone for however far back it's searchable by dates, by category. And that all ties into the subscription piece at the bottom. So when people want to subscribe to getting notices or subscribe to getting um when the newsletter's out, we do that now. When there's a land auction, when there's a tax uh timber auctions, people like to get email notices of that. We've got a couple of them running on the current site with oh over a thousand subscribers. So there are people that do want to um get notices on that stuff. So this takes you it's a much faster and more intuitive on this site. I don't have to do as much manually and I just lost my mouse. There it is. Subscribe takes you to a different page where a person can fill in the information. And then we have the ability to add and create categories as to what it is you want to subscribe to, hit the button. Then whenever we put out a notice in that category, the system will automatically do all the work. So that's one of the a nice new addition to the way the website works. Um and then I'll touch briefly about the compatibility because that's, that's a big one. See the page that I had up here. I was able to preview. So as we're working on this and building on it too, we can look at how it fits in other browsers. So we can maybe take a look here and show you what it would look like on a smartphone. That menu will go away. So it aligns everything to fit in a screen on a smartphone. The menu is a lot easier to get to. If I jump to a different menu item, we can see what that page, if it'll go. Doesn't want to go. Probably because this is logged out. It sat here a while. Let's look at. Let's look at this one. So there's your homepage. Um so we looked at the whole page before, so you have a comparison. There's that first row of buttons. Then there is the middle row of buttons. And then you're down to the what's happening and the news notices. So it formats everything much, much nicer for cellphone.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh let's see if I can get it to switch a page. Yeah, it's not live. Yep. There'll be a notice on the homepage when you first go to it, when we do go live, that's got a pop-up that says welcome to the new site, whatever, and then it'll go away. But yeah, that other will not happen. Parks and Recs. So here's what a little bit deeper, the next level in page is for all the parks. There, there's nice pictures, there's fewer words, you click on it, it'll take you to the page that has all the content about that park. So it's laid out and arranged in a lot more up to date, hopefully easier to follow. Uh we can look at another page, beans, we're going now, elected officials, there's a brief page about elected officials. I bet you want to look at this one. County Commissioners. Here you are here and then each page, this is similar to the old site. It just looks a little different. Your district, your precincts, your contact, the map for your district, the little bio that we talked about a week or so ago and your committee assignments. The logo will always take you back to the homepage. There's the search that is new to the website now that should be able to search within the site oh really well. We can't test that till it goes live either because it uses Google, but you can search a lot better on the website. Anything in particular you want me to click on while we're looking or was that enough?
So if we type in chickens, you take us right to Craig's side. Okay, Joel.
It looks ten thousand times better. So like
Yeah.
Thank you for all your work on this and everybody's.
Yeah.
So I know it was a long process artist, so thanks for taking it on and and showing us tonight. I I do have a couple of feedback points if if that's alright. Uh I think we got time. The tabs at the top, the categories, living here, services, et cetera.
Yep.
I might suggest maybe a uh just a reordering of that a little bit. And I think it would just, I don't know, something, something about the current layout feels off, like maybe our government followed by departments and services should be first. Followed by uh businesses and development and and then living here. Just a suggestion. Is there a watch live? Uh like uh for the meetings, uh an area on the, like if someone wanted to watch uh the meeting, they could go to the website first and then click on like a watch live and it brings them right to the YouTube.
Um yes.
There is, okay.
And there, there will, there's not one sitting on the, built on the page yet, but just like on the current website, when you click on that icon, it takes you to our channel. And then to the current live one or all the archives. So we can do the same thing. Yeah.
Okay, very good. Is that a picture on the banner there? Is that, is that somewhere in the county or is that a stock photo? I think it is, okay. All right, very good. Well, that's, that's good. I think we should have, uh you know, as many uh real pictures as possible out there versus I mean, some stock stuff makes sense, you know, that's fine, but but just some, some pictures from around the county are always nice. Is there a chat feature, like a pop-up where someone can type in a question?
No, there's not. Don't.
Maybe that's something to look into uh in the following year or something. Uh you know, that's, that's kind of a common thing uh for uh any entity that provides a, a business or service uh today.
There's another banner example there too. That's what Real
Oh, very good, okay.
Service did on theirs. A lot of them right now just have a uh banner that is the county build, one of the county buildings.
Mm-hmm.
And then those, looks like it needs to be centered a little bit, but those can be changed, edited. There, it's pretty stocked right now across the board. We're trying to work on more of the content, but.
Did I see when you were showing the smart, smartphone view, that there was like two? There was like two menu items, there was two, three little bars.
Um two sets of those?
Yeah.
Hmm.
I thought maybe I saw that and, and that, that looked a little off.
So right here, there's that.
Yeah, um. Maybe try clicking on a different page.
If it'll go.
Yeah.
Anyone else will?
I like, I like the order that they are there.
It seems like living here is the first one on most other sites. I didn't really give much thought.
What's under the tab? Yep.
Uh thanks, Mr. Chair. So uh first I want to uh let Diane know that she did a great job tonight. Um I can't remember the last time Diane ever presented to the county board, so uh great job. I want to thank uh you and and the committee for for doing this work. I think, you know, the current website that we have is really outdated and I'm excited to see, you know, what the, the new one has to offer, especially when it comes to, you know, the smartphone. Because I'll be honest, I don't have a computer at home and uh and and everything that I do, uh you know, online is through my phone or, or uh tablets. So excited for that.
Yeah, you'll love it.
Looks awesome and you guys did a great job and um I don't have any complaints, so I'm really happy. Like Tim said, that would be able to be viewed in all the different formats for everybody. It's gonna be really handy too.
Yep, and going forward, so the more eyes, the better too, even after we go live, if you notice things. Something that doesn't work, something's felt wrong, something that could be better, always let me know because we'll try to keep it as current and up fixes every day.
Mr. Chair. Let me have one quick follow-up. Uh I know some websites um sell, you know, their, their, their information. None of if people subscribe, they, none of this will be sold. Okay.
No.
Done. So the ultimate compliment comes from my five-year-old grandson. If you get the two thumbs up, dad's the only.
Okay.
Is there any chance that we'd ever be able to utilize um our website as our primary notification to the public?
I don't know. That would be a, if the law allows or not.
Yeah, if the law will allow, will allow that yet or not. I mean, as the world changes, uh you know, some communities that don't have a newspaper anymore. And it's, you know, but I'm saying, the newspaper is going away, but it, it, we don't really have another option at this point. I was wondering if we can get encourage subscribers and get more subscribers than, you know, what might be for the newspaper even the um the, we already have a thousand, that'd be pretty awesome.
Probably not the first time that.
That could be part of a newspaper article as well.
A newsletter article.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, I think uh we need to move on. Thanks Diane.
You bet.
Alright, and we'll start the at work session with Ann's uh report and if we need to, we'll move into the player session.
Alright, good afternoon or almost good evening. Ann Trager, HR Director, and tonight I present to you the personal rule update. There we go, any more little quick?
Okay.
Um so, here our practice is to keep personnel rules updated to help protect both employees and the county. Um changes that we're presenting are the Minnesota state law changes, clarifying language, industry standard updates, as well as ensuring that the document encompasses details for employees. Throughout the policy, you'll see some different things that come into play. The change of the document title itself from personnel rules to personal policy to keep up with um industry standard. Gender identity is now a protected class. So you'll see the he, she and his, her has been swapped out. And it actually just kind of cleans up the document itself for easier reading. Um you'll also see as the HR department has grown, you'll, the language is changing from HR Director specifically to the HR Department just to tell it line with current practices. And then throughout, you'll just see some formatting changes. After we finalize all the changes, some paragraphs might move around. Um these are all the sections that had updates that are more on the smaller scale of changes. And to save on time here, I won't go into detail of each one, but I just want to highlight some of the ones that were the legislative changes. Um for one, in the definitions, you'll see, I'll be talking about a little bit more in depth is the E S S T change. So we changed the temporary seasonal employees to allow them to receive that benefit specifically. You'll also see the access and right of subjects data. We took out language just to simplify it and match the state statute. Same goes for the military leave, just clean, clean up that language a bit. Um time off to vote, we updated language to allow for early voting. And the employee assistance program, we do note that E A P in the drug-free workplace section, but we wanted to make sure it was called out separately to comply with the new required notice that's effective January first. Um and that's for us to receive reimbursements from the state related to P T S claims for peace officers. Another state law change is the voluntary termination. We can't ask employees why they're giving their notice. Uh or we can ask them, but they aren't required to supply us a reasoning as to why they're leaving. Oh, and the clicker stopped. It is a night, huh? Um going into just a little bit more detailed changes for these areas had larger things that are updated. We have the break time for nursing mothers. The new language is more inclusive as to which employees may utilize this break time. We can no longer require employees to use the lactation room during their break time, but we can suggest that they do during their break time. So they do get paid for any time that they would need to do that. And we also cannot cut off the timeframe after a birth of twelve months. They can continue to do that for however long they see fit. Pregnancy accommodations was another new requirement and outlines certain, certain requests that do not require a doctor's note. Such as more frequent restroom breaks, food breaks, water breaks, uh sitting adjustments and such. Going into the expenses, this section referred to the auditor's office vehicle and travel expense reimbursement instruction, which was a guideline use but not an official policy. These changes now are all within the policy itself. It'll be easier for employees to find this information. And just some of the main points for this part was, we wanted to make sure it was clear that uh employees using a county vehicle have a valid driver's license and the supervisor should be checking those licenses. Supervisor should also be monitoring the agendas to, uh, prove the expenses that are relevant. Meals have been updated to utilize the U.S. General Services Admin per D M standards. We are gonna use the standard, um, that's available for Minneapolis-St. Paul at the first of each year. So those, um, we'll look that up and we'll get it over to finance. So that will be, what will be used on the expense forms for employees. And then we all has, have also adjusted the travel status times and laid out what the unauthorized purchases are. So that's clear. Earn safe and sick time. This is probably the biggest adjustment for our policy and it was a hot topic in the HR world in Minnesota. We formatted sections to encompass E S S T time in accordance with the state statute for our both, our full-time and benefited part-time employees. Not a lot changes, cause our policy already, um, is more generous than what the state law is requiring. The group that will see a change is the local forty-niners union. Instead of waiting three months to use sick time, they will only have to wait the eighty hours. And they also get to use it for expanded reasonings that are now in the state statute. The other big change for that will be our non-benefited part-time seasonal casual and temporary employees. They will now re- acquire, uh, one hour for, oh. That's okay. Look at that. One hour for every thirty hours they work and they can use that like the local forty-niners for sick time is after eighty hours of employment, then they can use that. They'll only be able to accrue up to forty-eight hours in a year. And we only will let them carry over if they've been here a couple of years. Eighty hours is their max carryover. Um, now just going really quick to some new sections that we added in, the smoke-free and scent-free workplace. We currently have this policy in place. It just wasn't written down anywhere. We had a line on higher letters saying we're a scent-free workplace, but now it's in the policies, just so it's more clear into what that means for employees. Social media, again, just added language as it relates to set up some guidelines for employees. The main thing is, we don't want an employee's statement on social media to be a representative of what the county statement would be. So this is a guideline to make sure that's a separation. And then we added an address code. Again, it was its own policy, but we, um, added it to here, so it's easier for employees to find and added some more flexibility per departments at the department head's discretion. So that sums up kind of all the changes that were made. Um, like I said, a lot of them were kind of just little tweaks in here, here and there. We had a couple bigger changes, um, that kind of aligned with the state statute that came out. Um, once approved, this will get sent out to staff. Um, we will send it out to all staff and as a practice going forward, we will require any changes that happen in personnel policy. Each time that happens, we'll have staff resign on those, on those changes, acknowledging that, so we know that they're aware of the different changes. So, any questions?
Okay, questions?
Mr. Chair, I do have a couple of questions on two different sections in the, uh, employee handbook. I don't know if we want to handle those now or at the regular meeting.
We could, uh, let's see. If, how long do you think they will take?
Um, five to ten minutes.
Yeah. Um, we'll hold you till five.
Okay, okay. Um, so in the, uh, employee handbooks, uh, in, uh, article thirty, political activity, this is regarding employees, uh, county employees that, um, run for office. Um, it, it essentially says, if a county employee runs for local office, such as township supervisor or city council or school board, that they would have to resign their employment from the county. And I'm just not sure I one hundred percent agree with that. Uh, since, uh, those positions are, you know, essentially very part-time, they're paid very little. Um, you know, it's not, i- it's not a forty-out, it's not another job, uh, full-time job. Uh, so, uh, I would be interested in us, you know, basically just striking that sentence from the employee handbook to allow any county employees, you know, the social studies teacher and me, the campaign election person. I'm always encouraging people to run for office if they want to run for office. Like, it's a way to, um, uh, encourage volunteerism and civic duty, and I think we want to do that as an organization, um, to get involved in the community. Um, so.
Is there, is there some state, um, law on this to?
I don't know offhand, but it's definitely something I can check into and I don't know one suggestion is two. I mean, we'll probably be updating this again next year. I mean, that could be one that I could put on for the next time, or I mean, it's up to you though.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, I remember that, uh, uh, the economic, uh, uh, supervisor, John Pocalisa was on the school board. I, I recall Jeff Lynn being on the school board, so I don't know how. I mean, if it's a policy, I don't know how that.
I, I, I didn't read it for you, but I, I'm, I'm not sure.
Uh, I mean, I gotta find it exactly.
But I was just mentioning that as, as a.
Yeah. Fifty-six?
Yeah, uh, fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven.
Yeah. You're, yeah, you're talking about the hat jack, Joe, which does, which is totally different than, is school board, county supervisor.
So our current policies would allow a county employee to retain their employment with the county?
If the school board member.
If they're a school, if they get elected to school board?
Being township supervisor, yeah. Cause those are in federal, they funded and they're not, they're not.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. That, well, that was my concern, so.
What's the other question?
Um, it was regarding uh, uh, telecommuting and the, uh, proposed, uh, change there.
Yeah, I didn't touch on that, but we did add in, um, just trying to add some flexibility where we can, we added in a special projects to the telecommuting. So this will capture circumstances beyond employee emergencies. Um, and that'll allow some supervisors, if they have some overtime options that employees can take benefit in. Um, if there's a big project that someone really needs to focus on and it'd be better that they could do that from their home. We, that will kind of encompass those type of special situations. Um, those do all have to go through their department head and then come to our office for final approval before that happens. Um, and then also kind of in the same world of that for the hours, for employees that work in a building that is open eight to four-thirty, we're adding in some extra time there to, so at the department head's discretion, those employees can come in in a little bit flexible timeframes. So we added an extra half hour in the morning to start at seven AM and then they can leave as early as three-thirty PM or as late as five-thirty PM to kind of try to help with some of those different instances that a person may need to work a little bit different hours.
So it sounds like we've added some nice flexibility.
Yeah, it's a start. Yeah, I think so.
I would agree. It's a, it's a, definitely a step in the right direction. I think the more, uh, flexibility and options we can offer folks on telecommuting, the more, uh, applicants we're gonna have for vacant jobs and just be, uh, an attractive employer. Um, the concern I did have was in, uh, section thirty-three disclaimer, telema- telecommuting maybe, maybe terminated by the county at any time. Uh, whereas before it was upon reasonable notice and writing. Um, could you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that a department had, has the authority if they have an employee that's working from home, who's at, A, maybe not actually working, or there's a situation where it's been approved that they work from home, but then for some reason, they need to get into the office to complete a task. I didn't want there to be a process that keeps the department head from pulling that employee back into the office. Um, because the ideal is you're getting to work out of the office for a particular reason. But I wanted to keep that authority if they're not active, or if they're not up to par at home, or say they say they're supposed to be coming in at seven, but they're not coming in at seven. So just kind of some guidelines for the department head to have that authority.
So it, it's, it seems to me like we've added something, but we've taken something away. Um, so the department head can just, without communicating to their employee, just unilaterally decide, uh, nope, you're coming in now, without having a conversation about it?
No, they would definitely have a conversation with them. I mean, it would be, if you're, if you're not performing at home, that would definitely be a conversation, but I just didn't want to get it held up where they can't just call them and have that conversation quick and it's gotta be an official process. Um, I wanted them to be able to easily react.
Uh, and I wanted to just mention that we're, we're kind of touching on negotiations as well, cause part of this was, uh, on an MOS, but it was, it was an opportunity for us to talk with our various groups and came up with a plan. So I think to me, this was kind of running along that plan that we were talking about. Negotiating, so. You know, if, if folks are not happy with whatever changes we've made, they can talk to their, uh, you, respective unions and bring that up during negotiations as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You got it. Thank you.
Yes, looks good. Lot of work. I mean, I spent a fair amount of time reading through this, but it's, uh, you're, 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 I think, balancing as well.
Good, thank you. I got the thumbs up. All right.
A couple thumbs up.
Right.
Thank you, my chair.
Thanks.
All right, I think we'll wait for the administrator's update, uh, Billy, Louis Melvin. That's done. Thank you. Here you go. A couple of minutes. Take a break.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I don't see any citizens to address the board. So could I have an approval of the agenda? Mr. Chair, I move we accept the agenda with the following addition, item fourteen A, administrator's update. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. All right, and then we have Mr. Moore or.
Oh, wait, no, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I move that we, uh, approve the consent agenda.
Oh, thank you very much. All right, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
Mr. Chair, I'd, I'd like to see us, uh, pull the approval of the updated personnel rules.
Okay.
Add it under regular agenda.
Seven, uh, fourteen B?
Fourteen B.
Well, actually, we would move fourteen A to fourteen B and.
Yeah.
Okay. We okay with that move and?
Well. It's ended.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
What's that?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Uh, since you've already approved the agenda with the addition of the first item of the administrator's report, not that I'm trying to get in front of that, but what you would want to do is approve the mo- if you agree to approve the movement of this as fourteen B, not A and then.
But we already approved the agenda.
Correct.
We're moving seven J down to fourteen B.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So move. All right, then we go on with our, with Dick Moore.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, I'm here before you is the final step of the land purchase process that if you look at the bottom of the agenda bill, started way back in July nineteenth of twenty-twenty-two, about a year and a half ago. And it's a purchase that'll allow us to access legally about a hundred and forty acres of tax forfeit in Beltrami County-owned land. And this is just the last step, looking for approval. It's right off of County Road, um, twenty-one, just in Turtle Lake Township. And, um, it just gets us access that we can legally get to this all, all season, which is huge, to get back into some property that we manage.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Have you went down to St. Paul recently, uh, to, for that, the final step in the process, or is that coming up with this, or can you talk about that part of it?
I have not. I think, um, the only time I have to go down to St. Paul is for a land exchange. Commissioner Gould, um, this is the first purchase I've done. In thirteen years, it's the first purchase I've done. Um, so we, it's been to the state, the D N R here to approve.
Okay.
Us purchasing it, but, um, no, I don't.
On the, on the other thing, the, the land exchange, you, you didn't need to go down to St. Paul for that yet, or is that coming up?
Uh, which land? Oh, the, um, Williamson one?
Yeah.
That's gone its way to the D N R for their approval. That's gone its way to the DNR for their approval. And then I'd have to go down to St. Paul. Um, it ultimately goes in front of Land Review Board, which is the Governor. Secretary of Schools, and I honestly forgot the third one, but yeah, it's exchanges that we have to go down to St. Paul for.
I would be curious to know when that is, if you wouldn't mind sharing that. When you know.
They they only meet quarterly down there, so sometimes it's depends on when you kind of get in the the queue.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I move that we approve the county land purchase from Glenn and Marie Bridgeford as described in the attached certificate of survey. For three thousand seven hundred twenty-six dollars and direct the county auditor treasure to direct payment to Glenn and Marie Bridgeford.
I'll second that.
Okay, and is there any question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So move.
Thank you, and that will be the last land purchase I bring in for the board. Um, Merry Christmas, everyone. Thanks.
Merry Christmas.
Okay. The involuntary hold. Of contract and MOA with Sanford.
Thank you, Mister Chair, Commissioners. I had got a mess up here with all these cords. All right. Uh, I'll just give you a high level overview of what you have before you right now. Individuals with severe mental health needs are put. Um, on emergency involuntary holds if there if the if there is a fear that they're going to harm themselves or someone else in the community. Uh, these holds can be done by law enforcement. They can also be done by a licensed physician or the court system as well. Uh, the individuals are then sent to a facility that can stabilize their current situation. Um, and and or hold them through a civil commitment process. Uh, the county is required by statute to either maintain or contract to provide a treatment facility for. Individuals placed on these emergency holds. Uh, the county is also responsible for associated costs if those costs are not covered by a health plan. Uh, and the individual is in our county as our responsibility. Historically, our county uh has met that requirement through an informal agreement with Sanford Health. Um, and as Sanford Health is not a county department, it seems prudent uh for us to develop a plan. With them in the form of a contract, which is a best practice. Uh, there is no standard rate for these types of contracts. We've looked at a number of different. Uh, organizations that provide this service, uh, kind of regionally. Um, there's no methodology that's uniform across the state. Um, it's really just something that you try to negotiate with your service provider. Uh, and so counties do do that. We just work with our local service providers, and so we've pulled contracts to try to see. What uh, what going rates are and that sort of thing. Uh, is the rate that's proposed uh in the contract was negotiated with Sanford and staff. And does include a reasonable cost of living adjustment on an annual basis. The contract outlines that the county is going to be the payer of last resort. That's incredibly important. Um, there are a lot of options, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, in the way that these services are offered. And certainly, we want to make sure that the taxpayers are the ones that pay locally here uh as the payer of last resort. So uh, the contract does obligate Sanford to um utilize uh private or public uh medical insurance first. And or if that individual doesn't have that kind of insurance, then to sign them up and and to do an eligibility assessment and sign them up for um. For a plan. Uh, and then if that doesn't work and there's no other alternative, then the county would end up being the one that would pay the bill. Uh, this contract does provide a clear path forward for both Sanford and for the county. Uh, we've sort of been operating for some time with a handshake. Um, and of course, that can. Become difficult to do when you have leaders change or organizations change or missions change and all that kind of stuff. So. We feel that this contract would be good for both Sanford and the and the county. In helping us to solidify an expectation going forward on the way that these um individuals are handled. Uh, also included in your packet is a memorandum of agreement, and that memorandum of agreement. Uh, settles any and all potential outstanding claims, bills, and all of that sort of stuff. As I mentioned before, we had this handshake uh kind of deal with Sanford Health and the um. Uh, there's been some disputes over what those bills were over the past, and so we've worked hard. Uh, to try to essentially get at our best, um. Uh, you know, our our best guess as to what those uh amounts are and settle it all all for once. And so that's what's included in the memorandum of of agreement. This has been a long time coming. Uh, Attorney Hanson had mentioned that as we brought this to fruition that. It was one of the things that was on his uh list of things to do his first year, which was what, four or five years or so ago? So uh, so it has been a long time coming. I'm glad that we've been able to to get to this point, and that's what's before you. Uh, for your deliberation and consideration this evening. I'll pause for any questions you might have.
Okay, uh, John?
Uh, I move that we approve the involuntary hold contract with Sanford Health and the corresponding MOA as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
In discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? So move. Okay, Commissioner's Salary Resolution. All right, the uh resolution was in our packet. There are motions to accept the resolution.
Mister Chair, I'll move that we accept the resolution as it's customary for the Commissioners to. Take the same. Um, cost of living increase that the that the employees have been negotiated on, and it's in our budget.
There are second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? So move.
Mister Chair, I'd like to move the Commissioner per diem resolution for twenty twenty-four as presented.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Mister Chair, I. I believe we uh have already agreed to have a committee to review the per diems. Uh, we will meet this Thursday at one o'clock. Uh, I'm not anticipating any great big changes. I think that we could have. That put together by the January second meeting, so I would actually be in favor of not approving this. And waiting until January second to do this.
And actually, what I would like to do, I would like to see us approve this. With the idea that the committee is meeting and we can make changes afterward.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
That's my understanding of what. What we're kind of planning on, because at the last meeting, you got the committee approved to. To study this, to work on this, to bring back any recommendations. So I think the committee is. Formed and is is doing its work your your meeting. Um. But I think it's still prudent to uh. Uh, pass this resolution tonight, and we can always uh. You know, make any uh minor adjustments in the future. You know, I think it's important to have uh per diem payments. You know, they can be beneficial for several reasons. They simplify expense tracking, provide a fixed daily allowance for meals and incidental expenses. Reduce administrative burden and offer flexibility for employees and Commissioners on business trips. Um. Also, per diems can help uh help us control costs by establishing a. Uh, predictable budget for travel expenses, which we've done for this upcoming year. Um, so I I don't see any reason why we just uh went past this tonight.
Others?
Hey, Mister Chair, I just don't know why. We won't have, I mean, we've already, we're already for this year, we already have our per diem set the way it was. And by our January meeting, if the committee is done, then we could do it, change it once and be done with it instead of change. Instead of approving it, a a new thing now and then. But um redoing it in January, at the beginning of January, that is, why don't we just wait and do it at the beginning of January?
I guess, I guess I would just assume. Leave the per diems the way they are. And the committee is going to not necessarily look at the fifty or the seventy-five, we're going to look at what is encompassing encompassing.
Right, but if we, but what I'm saying is that this this is for next year's per diems. We've, you know, up until our next meeting in January. We will be on this, so we don't have to approve this to get anything covered between now and then. And then in January, after the committee has done their findings, then we would vote on. What we want to have for twenty twenty-four, and it wouldn't be any meetings prior to that meeting because it's January second, so.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. I I I think Commissioner Gosvig is correct in that. Uh, you're set for this year. There's no action, so if you had a trip or or something like that, it's already set for this year. Since your first meeting is in on January second. I I'm not aware of anyone who's planning to travel on business for the first, so I think if you postponed the action till the second, you're probably good. But I wouldn't encourage you to go much beyond that.
Unless anybody has a meeting on the second.
Motion, yeah, the motion has been made and seconded uh to. Leave it as is. That was the motion.
Mister Chair, you know, I guess. You know, watching the last meeting since I wasn't here for that part of the the meeting, I. I'm I'm a bit confused on. The. Per diem conversation resolution that was um not approved last meeting. Um. It's my understanding that nothing's going to change, right? It it the rate's going to stay the same, or or is this committee, you know. What exactly is the task of this committee because? From what my understanding is, it was just to review. Or create a policy that. That uh. A commissioner or Commissioners feel that we we either lack or that is too loose, so. I I don't really, I mean. If the per diem rate's going to be the same, I don't see why we wouldn't want to. Pass it tonight, I mean.
I think if it were just the rate that we were talking about, but as you said, the policy, if it's if. The feeling is it's too loose and it's too uh, it's too easy to um. Or not easy necessarily, but there could be things beyond assignments that uh. We're going to deal with, we're just going to take a look at as a committee, as far as I understand, we're going to take a look at it. And perhaps try to tighten it up a bit, but we're not talking of changing the fifty or the seventy-five as far as I'm I'm. So, uh, John?
Well, Mister Chair, I I think everything's on the table with that committee, but I think primarily. We need to come up with a policy. Who will be it? The policy will have to talk about who will be. The person that reviews Commissioners' expense submittals. Um, and establish that. Whoever that person is that we establish. Then that person needs to have a policy so that they can look through a policy and say. Yep, that looks fine. Everything's good. Everything's good. If there's a question about something that might have been submitted. And the the person have to go back to the policy. If it's unclear, then what do we do? All of those kinds of things need to be in a policy so that it's tightened up.
Well, Mister Chair, I mean, uh, we we've done this. Year after year, you know, we always set our our salaries, our per diem, our committees on on the last meeting. Of the of the year. Um, and. You know, there's a, there's a motion, you know, and I agree with, uh, you know, my colleague, Commissioner Carlson. About a policy and whatnot, especially when it comes to, you know, our expenses, you know, as Commissioners. Um, because looking at the bills last meeting last week. I noticed my name was circled. Um, looking at the expenses this week. I noticed, you know, one of our colleagues. Um, names, you know, weren't circled, so I mean, like. Yeah, I I have no problem or issue with with, you know, anybody questioning, you know, my expense sheet. But, you know, if you if you want to question me, you know, why not question, you know, the the entire board, you know? You know, give me the the sheet back and I'll and I'll. I'll circle, you know, my fellow colleagues' expenses, you know, it's not that I don't trust them. You know, I believe that they do the work that they they submit for, um, but it's this kind of, uh, to me, it seems. Uh. Kind of an overreach. On on. On. The the Commissioners' um. Actions and and questioning, you know, why? Why I'm doing this or why I'm doing that. Yeah, I I don't I don't get it. I don't understand it, so I'm I'm a little thrown back by it. Kind of baffled because, I mean, I think that's the first time that I've experienced something like that, and and I definitely don't need a babysitter. Um. So it's, you know, this per diem thing is just kind of.
Thank you, Mister Chair, and I don't mean to insert myself uh inappropriately here, but. Because it's not my.
Part of your.
Is not my issue and um. But I'm looking at Minnesota Statute three seventy-five point zero five five. Which is the County Commissioners Compensation. County Commissioners in all counties except Hanipin and Ramsey shall receive as compensation for services rendered. Buy them for the respective county's annual salaries. In addition, may receive per diem payments. And reimbursement for necessary expenses in performing the duties of the office as set by a resolution of the county board. The salary and schedule of the per diem payments shall not be effective until January one of the next year, so. I highly encourage you to set something today, because if you go to January second. And and amend it, that won't take effect until January first of twenty twenty-five, the way I read that statute, and I'm. I'm operating off the fly here, so you know, I apologize from that perspective. Um. And and Tom, I I don't know if you've looked at the issue before or not, but that, I mean, the statute is pretty clear. It says January first of the next year, so. If um.
Uh, Mister Chair, that was my understanding, you know, is that it wouldn't take effect till the following.
Yeah, so.
Year if we, and I think that's why we always did did it, the the meeting, the last meeting of the year.
But if you have a committee that meets and does do some recommended changes, it's going to take a year to implement those, by by my reading.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Pass four to one. Uh. Assignments. Our assignments.
Mister Chair, I'll uh make the motion to. I guess for the sake of discussion, um. Approve the Commissioner Committee assignments.
Second.
Okay, Mister Chair, um, again, I I did miss that uh part of the meeting last uh last week. And I do have some additions to my committee committee list that I. Uh, would like to bring forward is the County Opioid Committee. And that, um. Amy Bowles is the one that uh heads up that. And we meet the the second Monday from two to four. And also. The. I I noticed that the Shack appointment wasn't part of my. Uh, committee assignments. Yeah, so. And that is quarterly, uh, meets four times a year and could potentially uh be. Other times as well, but for sure quarterly. And also, um, I know that NACO is on the uh committee assignment list, but it's one of the. Um. Maybe we could add that to my my list. Okay. Okay.
This is the last one that she sent out.
Okay, yeah. Mister Chair. Um, also. I look at you. It's hard to see it on my phone. I had no idea that Zach was uh no longer gonna be with us. It's uh it's unfortunate because I felt that that he does great work for for, you know, the county. Um. For the One Watershed One Plan, uh. For mine would be um Thief River Falls. Not Red Lake Falls. And also um part of the Red Lake One Watershed One Plan, which includes uh. The reservation and the Kellier Waskis area. And the ConCon, can can you put and PIL? Because we have two separate committees, the PIL and the ConCon that meet um. Yeah, this they're the same committee, just different names. Um. Yeah, we we meet twice a year for each one, so. I think that's all I have for now. The PIL? No, it would be the same committee. It's just separate names, so so, yeah. And Mister Chair, I I and I just remembered, um. During uh the the last meeting, there's conversations about staff filling in for uh commissioners and whatnot. And I'm just kinda curious to know about AMC. I know that we're all assigned to, you know, a different committee within AMC. And I'm not too sure, you know, of my colleagues, uh, uh, what their participation or involvement with AMC. If we could, if they're not gonna be involved, maybe we can appoint, you know, a staff member, you know. Such as maybe our Public Information Officer, who has, you know, a wealth of. Knowledge when it comes to public safety. I'm not too sure if we have, you know, a representative that. Participates in the public safety, so I mean, that's also something that maybe we can consider.
Mister Chair, just to help Commissioner Sumner, we do have three delegates that you choose every year for AMC. In the event that one or more of you can't be there and they're voting delegates and they're the staff members, myself, Jody and Bruce. So that part should be covered. Um, and then.
There's there's five, there's five standing committees.
There are.
And and each commissioner is appointed to. I'm General Government, you're. You know, so.
And I I sit on public safety for somebody.
Okay, okay, okay. That would be transportation. There's public safety.
That's correct.
Sounds good. Thank you.
You bet.
I'll be quiet now.
Move on to the Crown Property.
Yes, Sir Chair, yeah, we we didn't vote yet.
These will be, and these will be also being reviewed as far as like committee thing then, or, okay?
Well, no, not the assign, not not the assignments, no, no.
What committees are acceptable or not, or?
No, I think they're different than most, like more per diem than uh committee.
Yep, they're separate.
So.
This is this is just assigning to.
Okay, so but but this is also approving other committees that are eligible too, right?
Well, yeah, well, no.
Yeah, it is. Isn't this approving what committees are eligible as well?
That was in the.
The eligibility list and the assignments, isn't?
Question you there, I thought you were gonna put a tie to the per diem conversation.
No, well, I I think it's.
The per diem.
Something that's looked at as far as, because it goes hand in hand with the per diem. As far as, um, you know, are some of these needed to be on here anymore? And, you know, I think the committee should be looking at at which of these are are still. Needed.
Well, you know, and and Mister Chair, I I think, you know, the committee assignments are kind of up to the commissioner. Because, I mean, if if this committee says, okay, well. Why are you on this committee? At some point, there had to be some sort of reason why, um.
That is my point, Tim, it uh it just uh like, for instance, the state and federal legislative activities. Including meetings with legislators, members of Congress. When we have meetings with any legislators, it's usually as a group, as a board. And, you know, if I'm going to have like when Stover came to go through the jail tour or whatever. That I didn't feel like that was a legitimate thing to put down as an expense and um. Or or if I just decide to go meet with somebody, um, I don't think that's. That's something that their taxpayer should be paying for, um, especially if it's a partisan thing. And I mean, if we have a group meeting, that's us as a board, we don't get a separate per diem for that. And I just don't think that that particular one, I don't know about other ones, but that particular one, I think we should scratch off the list.
Mister Chair, uh, point of information. Um, I think we passed the per diem resolution, which includes. Uh, the eligible. Uh, committees. The 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 task of the committee that we're forming for per diems. Is tasked with looking at the process of per diem payments and being paid per diem. Uh, and uh not necessarily the list of.
Yeah, I think you're right.
It's two separate things, so I. Mister Chair, I'd like to call the uh motion to question.
What what can they get paid for is part of the per diem thing and the and the policy as such.
That might come up in discussion. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Votes?
Aye.
Pass for the one. All right, now we can talk about the Crown Property purchase.
Yes, some good news. Um, just a reminder that you. Um, are scheduled to close this Friday at one o'clock on the Crown Property as the new property for the jail. The new county jail. Um, and so what's before you here is a request to approve the acquisition as a formality. Uh, with the board action and also to approve the expenditure. Of one thousand five hundred seventeen dollars and eighty-five cents of closing costs, because this is a donated property. And then thirdly, uh, your approval to authorize the board chair to sign uh the closing documents. Now, you did indicate last time we met that that was satisfactory to you, uh, but for closing, we wanna make sure that we have a formal. Authority so that uh the title company is satisfied with regard to who the legitimate signer is. So that's what's before you at this point. I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Mister Chair, I approve, I move to approve the acquisition of the Crown Property and the expenditure of one thousand five hundred seventeen dollars and eighty-five cents for closing costs. And authorize the board chair to sign the closing documents.
Sir, second.
I'll second.
There's a discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Votes? Don't move. All right, now we have the administrator update.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um, I have a very brief update. Uh, it's only been a week since we last met, so I don't have a whole lot uh for you. Uh, but just to update you, the CMR at risk or the Construction Manager at Risk. Uh, selection committee has developed a short list of firms. Uh, we met for a couple hours uh last week and did that. And uh, we hope that, uh, well, interviews are actually scheduled for this Thursday. So once we get through that process, we'll go to negotiations and hope to bring you a contract that satisfactory to you on uh January sixteenth. Um, I just mentioned the closing for the Crown Property. And then lastly, the important dates of Christmas and New Year's holidays. Uh, both of those fall on Mondays this year, so uh in observance of those um. Holidays, the county offices will be closed on both dates as observed. Um, and then lastly, um, I was told there was like an ugly sweater contest and that there'd be a prize and. You know, that sort of thing, so I was just, oh, yeah, bragging rights, that's the price. So don't forget to vote.
Okay, let's uh, yeah, final item of the uh. Regular agenda is the Hillen Newsards' approval of updated personnel rule.
Mister Chair.
Yeah.
Um, I did find again that that sentence of in political activity. Uh, on page fifty-six or fifty-seven. Uh, Article thirty of the Employee. Uh, Policy Handbook, it says if a county employee. Is elected to the Office of Legislature or to a full-time county or city office in Minnesota, the employee must either. Resign their employment or obtain a leave of absence without pay. Prior to taking the oath of office. Additionally, it also says. If a county employee is elected to an office other than Beltrami County Commissioner, which the county determines is. Legally incompatible with the employee's job duties, the employee must resign from employment. Unless the county in its sole discretion changes the employee's job duties prior to the employees taking the oath of office. So this does tell me that one of our county employees would have to resign. Um, if they were elected to City Council or Township Officer or or School Board. And I and I'm just not sure, uh. You know, that should be in there.
You jump to the page number again?
It's a, it's uh, the old page fifty-seven, new page sixty-nine, sixty-nine in blue. That could be the packet number. And the work packet.
Yeah, I got the work packet. I, Joe, the way I read that is it is it says full-time. Yes, a city council.
Right. Well, is it or isn't, I mean, it's confusing because. You would think it really isn't, because it's, it really is in reality a part-time position, but.
Mister, he stole my thunder. I would point the same thing referring to a full-time position, um. Which, you know, I don't believe the city has any elective full-time positions. Uh, the. For example, myself, the sheriff and the auditor are full-time elective positions. If you're a county employee or elected sheriff, auditor, or county attorney, the expectation is you resign your. County position and serve as the elective, because you can't be double-dipping into.
Right.
So that's really the purpose of that statement.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, like the sheriff, we had to put in on on leave or whatever from his regular position while he's sheriff.
And then as far as legislature, you can run for legislature, you can win. It says if you wanna serve as legislator and be employed at the county county, we're gonna ask that you take leave of absence. For the months that you're down in legislature, so that you're again, you're not double-dipping to taking legislature.
No, I understand that, but yeah, that makes sense to me.
That's pretty common sense.
Now, whether the phraseology can be changed or something, that we could talk about that, but I think that's the intended purpose.
Yeah, I I would still say there's room for improvement, uh, massaging those two uh sentences in there a little bit and.
Thank you.
Especially that last sentence too.
Any more discussion?
Mister Chair, I would move the uh the approval of the updated personnel rules.
Second, second. More discussion?
I just wanna thank Ann for the tedious work. I know it's long to do this. Um, appreciate you updating this and and the uh. Step in the right direction towards telecommuting. I do think uh there's room for improvement there still uh in in the future, but. Um, so because of the political section and the telecommuting section, I will be voting no on this.
Anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
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 Votes?
Aye.
Pass for for the one. All right, then we have the legislative lobbying issues along with Commissioner's report.
No report, Mister Chair.
Yep.
Uh, Mister Chair, I did attend the uh. My mic wasn't on. I I did attend the um opioid uh meeting last week, the NACO meeting. The the good thing about the NACO meeting, well, in the sense is that. It's on Zoom. But the bad thing is it uh conflicts with my county opioid meeting, so I. I kinda have to pick and choose, you know, which one to go to. Um, but there are times that I did go to the opioid one for an hour and then. Uh, attend the NACO one for another hour, so. Um, I I seen on the the salaries or per diem, one of the where you had to. Claim or where you can claim up to up to four meetings per day, whatnot. I wasn't aware of that. Because there was times that. Like I spend the morning in in Fort Town during the PIL ConCon, have lunch. Get to Kellier for the afternoon for the PIL ConCon, so I wasn't really aware. Of uh, you know, being able to claim those two, so I never did. So maybe that there, you know, there is some good things, you know, coming, you know, and and trying to figure out, you know, a policy. Um. And at the Black Duck Ambulance Meeting, uh, which was very interesting. Um, and also, I think it's this coming week, we have a. This this week where we have, we're meeting with the. Health and Human Services folks and and Northwest folks, or is that next week? Yeah, it's this week, this Friday, yeah, Friday. Um, and I also want to mention that. I got writer's crap when we first, uh, when we're going through our first presentation there with the with the. Community, uh, the first children's finance, uh. Writing a lot of questions down because, I mean, it it really. A lot of my folks, and I know a lot of people that I know, childcare really affects them, you know, and and as a grandparent. Um, I know that it affects, you know, our kids and and, uh, you know, I'm thankful to be in a position where I have the flexibility to. Um, help. So I know that childcare is is a huge problem, a huge issue. The lack of childcare um affects a lot of people. I'm just kinda wondering, you know, what is the reason for uh three? The loss of three hundred and twenty childcare programs, you know, between June of twenty twenty-two and June of twenty twenty-three. I'm sure there's a lot of, a lot of uh factors that come into play. One of the things that also um cares to know and and maybe find out is. Do do we have employees who struggle with childcare? And how do we work with them or do we, you know, because looking at that, you know, absenteeism is an issue. Tardiness is an issue. Um. I guess I'd like to learn a little bit more, you know, how childcare really affects our our employees. And what we can do to maybe help them out, because. Childcare affects a lot of, you know. A lot of what we do, and I wanna make sure that our employees are, you know, have access to. To these types of services, so, um. I believe that's it for my. Our report, I wanna thank Commissioner Gould for for uh encouraging us to to try something different with the uh ugly sweater. Um.
Must have been.
Well, you know, uh. I I did, I mean, and and quite honestly, you you wouldn't catch me wearing a Green Bay Packers sweater, so. That's my report, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. I just an item so that I don't forget Diane. Uh, on the calendar, we did change December tenth to December third, isn't that correct?
No, we changed it from December third.
No, no, we changed it back. But I thought you said that they changed.
December.
I thought I thought last time, last week, you said that. I thought I thought last time, last week, you said that AMC moved their meeting to the second week so that our.
I'm not, I'm not aware of that, Mr. Chair.
That happened this year. That's what we did for this month.
AMC has has typically been the first week in Jan.
But I thought I heard you say last week that that they changed that.
No, sir, I don't believe so. I think what we were referring to, unless I misstated.
The question if we can change back to the way it was. Because I didn't know how much.
I didn't know how much participation that we would get from commissioners or or staff attending if we kept it this.
Okay, I I'm sorry, I just, I I thought I heard somebody say that that the AMC changed the week that they're gonna.
I was trying to change the the way AMC did things, but it didn't work.
Not a, not a problem, okay. Uh, and I had one other item, I should have written it down.
You went to Prime West, say one that.
Yeah, I went to Prime West.
And you went to the emergency communication, or did that use, or didn't you?
Right, and then we had a jail, uh, Design and Operations, uh, Committee meeting, and so we're. We're a little bit on hold right there right now, um. But I think most of the other committees for the jail project are pretty much done. I think except for the Design Committee that I know of.
Uh, I think the Scaring Committee will is still active as well.
Okay.
Programming is still supposed to meet, uh, my understanding, yeah.
Um, I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
Uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, if you don't mind, we were just cross-checking the AMC conference, and I don't know where Commissioner Carlson gets his information, it's really creepy. But the website does say that the AMC Conference next year is December ninth through the eleventh. Twenty twenty-four.
Tim, what the heck, you're supposed to be on top of this stuff.
So.
Mr. AMC District Guy.
Well, maybe that's why I suggested it for Tom.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Uh-huh, oh, there we go, yeah.
I will, I will take this bullet, no problem.
Uh-huh.
Now.
Switch it back to December third.
And you will all should probably agree to amend your approval of that schedule, either now or some point in the future.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept a revised calendar. With the date of December tenth moved back to December third for next year's meetings.
Third second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Polls? Don't move. All right, then we're on to.
All right. Uh, thanks, Mr. Chair, um, actually, even though it's only a week, I had quite a few committees at Polk County Advisory Board, um. Still running into challenges with the MPCA and, you know, we. They just on their own took the, took it upon themselves to remove our hubs or, you know, for the nine-county deal that you get, you know, we. Came in and had the presentation on, um, we had submitted it with the two hubs being one probably in Northern Hubbard and one being in Polk County. And then the rest were considered spokes that would haul to those locations for the construction and demolition. And they just took it, took the hubs out of our application. And submitted it and added some other stuff to it of their own to our application and. And and it doesn't work without the hubs, obviously, and we can't afford to do it without the hub, so it's just very unfortunate that I did that, so. We're going to probably end up having to, uh, continue with our our direct, um. Approach to the MMB with the entire package that we need, so. Um, but we had some pretty good discussion about that, um, Becker County reneging on. On, uh, their commitment to us a year ago, they signed a deal saying that they were going to bring us, uh. About ten thousand tons of of waste and we paid to have a assessment done on everything and and now they're. Reneging on that and saying that they're going to, you know, only bring us, that they would only bring us two or three thousand tons at the most and. And, uh, I think they shopped us after they did that and and we kind of. You know, allowed them to bring us some waste last year, um, with the, with their intention of bringing us more and becoming basically probably a partner of ours. And now they're reneging on it, so we were sending them a letter saying, no, you can, you can take your two or three thousand tons elsewhere. And, uh, and, you know, if you're not going to be honorable, then we're not going to accept that, so just some. Long, it was a long meeting and and that, but, uh, um, we we worked through those issues. Um, had a fun HRDC Christmas party meeting, uh, and, uh. Um, Black Duck Ambulance, we had the Truth in Taxation last week on Thursday night, and there, that was smooth, had one person show up and not a big deal. And we had our Construction Manager at Risk, uh, reviews, uh, that's going well. And this morning, we had our Solid Waste Committee meeting and, uh, we're moving forward with, uh. Um, meeting with Port Hope Township and continuing discussions with them on having a a transfer site there. Thank you.
Your motion to adjourn.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, um. I hesitantly make a motion to adjourn because, uh, you know, this is your your last meeting as as chair and, uh. You know, I'm going to miss going, you know, up until six o'clock each night, so.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
I'll prepare for the first part of the next session.
I hear him also, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.